Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. How is everybody? We are in the new month, which means that we have a new earth. So, this is sometimes known as the golden rule. Do unto others as you have them do to you, or do unto others as you have them do to me. Luke six thirty one. Now, in your understanding of this little special teaching, what's the third? It's about every person in the world has this concept of being nice. But it's always a negative statement. Like, be nice is a positive thing. Jesus puts it in a positive sense, do to others as you have them do to you. So, it's not, it's not, it's not just, you know, just get along, okay, you guys, you know? But it's to actually consider, if I was in that verse to choose, how would I want to choose? And so, when you, when you read these paragraphs, they like to point to this verse as they see, you know, all religions are the same. But there's actually a very, very big difference between telling somebody, hey, thank God I didn't want to choose, as opposed to knock out three of us. So, this is our memory verse for the month of September. Say this together. Do to others as you have them do to you. Luke six thirty one. Heavenly Father, we give you thanks. You do not do twice as you did to us. What else you love us, love us more than us. You particularly restore our lives, your grace and your mercy. Even though we don't want to pray, you worship. You at this day, you learn about the Lord, you learn about the Jesus, you learn about the Lord. Right? Speaking of poor God, that's our theme today. Nine thirty seven, thy word is all. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. How is everybody? Hey, we are in the new month, which means that we have a new earth. So, this is sometimes known as the golden rule. Do unto others as you have them do to you, or do unto others as you have them do to me. Luke six thirty one. Now, in your understanding of this little special teaching, what's the third? It's about every person in the world has this concept of being nice. But it's always a negative statement. Like, be nice is a positive thing. Jesus puts it in a positive sense, do to others as you have them do to you. So, it's not, it's not, it's not just, you know, just get along, okay, you guys, you know? But it's to actually consider, if I was in that verse to choose, how would I want to choose? And so, when you, when you read these paragraphs, they like to point to this verse as they see, you know, all religions are the same. But there's actually a very, very big difference between telling somebody, hey, thank God I didn't want to choose, as opposed to knock out three of us. So, this is our memory verse for the month of September. Say this together. Do to others as you have them do to you. Luke six thirty one. Heavenly Father, we give you thanks. You do not do twice as you did to us. What else you love us, love us more than us. You particularly restore our lives, your grace and your mercy. Even though we don't want to pray, you worship. You at this day, you learn about the Lord, you learn about the Jesus, you learn about the Lord. Right? Speaking of poor God, that's our theme today. Nine thirty seven, thy word is all. Good morning. Um, do we know who's counting offering today? Okay, all right. So, you got the plates there? Okay, perfect. Um, before we begin, just gonna all announce this up to the end of the service too. Um, so, Western days praise was yesterday. Um, we took second place in the nonprofit. Yeah, very, very impressive. You get to be with winners, basically. Thank God it's spread from in town, yes, yes. Yeah, I think we took third place a year or two ago, so we're bumping up in the world here now. All right, we are in the book of Acts, and Luke does a really good job of, um, kind of explaining the situation, and, um, like all good authors, um, hinting at the upcoming potential conflict, right? Obviously, who's the ultimate author of the book of Acts? It is the Holy Spirit. But it is written through the person of Luke, so. We ended chapter four with, um, thus Joseph, who was also called by the apostle Barnabas, which means son of encouragement, a Levite, a native of Cyprus, sold a field that belonged to him, and brought the money and laid it at the apostles' feet, right? Because, um, they were taking care of one another. Notice also, and Derek pointed this out to me, Joseph sold a field, right? Because we talked about that. Um, and when we talked about, you know, the Anabaptists, especially in the fifteen hundreds, the Anabaptists were really, really big of saying, oh, we shouldn't own any property, right? We should be a collective, nobody owns anything, but we just hold everything in common. Did Joseph sell everything he owned? No, he sold a field. Uh, Luke could point out, people were selling houses. Did they sell the house that they lived in? No. No, they sold spare houses, right? Um, basically, they had properties and such that they had invested in, and when a need arose and people needed money, they would sell that property and take some of those proceeds, or take all of those proceeds, and donate them to the church to take care of the widows and the orphans and things like that. And this is a practice that we see, that Paul will even commend later on, um, in his epistles. When he writes, the epistle means letter, when he writes to people and say, you know, I'm taking, I'm getting a gathering, uh, taking an offering, gathering up an offering, and I'm gonna take it to, you know, Jerusalem, because, you know, they're dealing with the famine or something there, right? To help take care of people. So, we see this historic Christian practice, and it's not something that Christians just invented. It is modeled off of the Old Testament. In the Old Testament, you weren't supposed to try to get, you know, bleed out every single penny you could, or wring out every single penny you could, right? When you harvested, you were supposed to leave the edges of your field so that widows or somebody who was poor could come in and harvest and be able to sustain themselves. The idea of the kinsman redeemer, we see that explicitly with Ruth and her mother, not mother, mother-in-law, uh, Naomi, right? Where Naomi comes back to her people, and is it, um, oh my gosh, is it Boaz? Yeah, right? And yet, there's somebody who's close to her, and it's like, oh, if you take her in, by the way, you gotta take all this, and the guy's like, oh, I can't do that, right? So, there was, there was a social network system that was built in to take care of people in the Old Testament. This is a continuation of that. And so, Luke, he has kind of, he's laid it out, right? Christians are living in harmony together. There's a growing threat from outside the church. We saw that with Peter and John when they were in the temple, and they were explicitly told not to teach, not to preach Jesus, and then crucified and resurrected. And they said, hey, you know, basically, we gotta obey God, not men, right? And we talked about, hey, you know, what does that kind of look like for us today? Are there other places, you know, jobs, or community, things like that, where we're told not to share our faith? Or, you know, if we're sharing our faith, we can only do it in certain ways and things like that. So, now, in kind of chapter five, we're going to see some dissension within the church. It's gonna start out with that, and then there'll be some more growing dissension. Because Luke is leading the story through, of course, this is history, and he's gonna lead it up to the, um, persecution where the church really disperses out from Jerusalem, and the apostles stop being all in Jerusalem, and they go out into the greater world. Now, are there Christians in other, or what we would call Christians, in other parts of the world right now? Yes, right? Because there are people that came and believed at Pentecost that didn't live in Jerusalem, and they went home, right? So, uh, but the apostles are mainly here in Jerusalem. So, let us read through all of chapter five. It is a moderately long, it's forty-two verses, so we'll take, just read it as you need to, or as you want, and we'll kind of do our popcorn fastens. Whoever wants to start out, verse, uh, chapter one, chapter one, chapter five, verse one. Begin.
But they covered man, man, and I, this Sephira, his wife, and they possessed, and they possessed, or solely possessed him. And he kept back part of the proceeds. His wife also being aware of it, and brought a certain part, and laid it at the apostles' feet. But he said to Anias, why have you filled your heart to lie to the Holy Spirit and keep back part of the Christ, of the lamb for yourself? While it remained, was it not your own? And after it was sold, was it not your own control? Or was it not in your own control? Why have you been, why have you conceived this thing in your heart? You have not lied to men, but to God.
When Ananias heard these words, he fell down and breathed his last. And great fear came upon him, all who heard it. The young men rose, and he wrapped him up, and he carried him out and buried him. After an interval of about three hours, his wife came in, not knowing what had happened. And Peter said to her, tell whether you sold the land for so much. And she said, yes, for so much. But Peter said to her, how is it that you have agreed together to test the spirit of the Lord? Behold, the feet of those who have buried your husband are at the door, and they will carry you out. Immediately she fell down at his feet and breathed her last. When the young men came in, they found her dead, and they carried her out and buried her beside her husband. And great fear came upon the whole church, and upon all who heard of these things.
And by the hands of the apostles were many signs and wonders wrought among the people. And they were all with one accord in Psalm of the porch. And of the rest, there was no man joining himself to them, but the people magnified them. And believers were the more added to the Lord, multitudes, both of men and women.
So that they even carried out the sick into the streets and laid them on cots and mats, that as Peter came by, at least his shadow might fall on them. The people also gathered from the towns around Jerusalem, bringing the sick and those afflicted with unclean spirits, and they were all healed. But the high priest rose up, and all who were with him, that is the party of the Sadducees, and filled with jealousy, they arrested the apostles and put them in the public prison. But during the night, an angel of the Lord opened the prison's doors, and brought them out, and said, go and stand in the temple unto the people all, the words of his life. And when they heard this, they entered the temple at daybreak and began to teach.
Now, when the high priest came, and those who were with him, they called together the council, and all the servants of the people of Israel sent to prison to have them brought. But when the officers came, they did not find them in the prison, so they returned and reported. We found the prison securely locked, and the guards standing at the doors, but when we opened them, we found no one inside. Now, when the captains of the temple and the chief priests heard these words, they were greatly perplexed about them, wondering what this would come to. And someone came and told them, look, the men whom you put in prison are standing in the temple and teaching the people. Then the captain, with the officers, went and brought them, but not by force, for they were afraid of being stoned by the people.
And when they had brought them, they stepped before the council. The high priest questioned them, saying, are you strictly charging not to teach in his name? Yet, here you have filled Jerusalem with your preaching, and you intend to bring this man's blood upon us. Peter and apostles answered, we must obey God rather than men. God of our fathers raised Jesus, whom you killed by hanging him on a tree. God exalted him at his right hand as leader and Savior to give repentance to Israel and forgiveness of sins. And we are witnesses to these signs, and so is the Holy Spirit, and God has given it to those who obey.
When they heard this, they were furious and wanted to put him to death. But the Pharisees, the Pharisee made, a reliable and a teacher of the law, who had honored, who was honored by all the people, stood up in the synagogue and ordered the man to be put outside for a while. And then he addressed the synagogue, made a bet, and said, consider carefully what you intend to do to Jesus. Some time ago, Judas appeared, claiming to be somebody, and about four hundred men rallied to him. He was killed, all his followers were dispersed, and he knew nothing. After him, Judas, who had got a man, appeared, and raised him to sentences, and led a band of people who were old. Each of them was killed, and all his followers were scattered. Therefore, in the present case, I advise you, let them alone, let them go, for if their purpose or activity is of human origin, they will fail. But if it is from God, you will not be able to stop these men. You will only find yourselves fighting against God. His speech persuaded them, and called the apostles in, and then flogged. Then they ordered them not to speak in the name of Jesus and let them go. The apostles left the synagogue rejoicing, as they had become unworthy of suffering this grace from them. Day after day, in the temple courts, from house to house, they never stopped teaching and proclaiming the good news that Jesus has been discarded.
All right. So, there's a lot going on in this chapter. So, there's, there's a guy, Anias, or excuse me, Ananias and Sephira. And I wanna, well, I'll get to that in just a second. They sell a piece of property. We don't know what property they sold. We don't know how big, small. We don't know if it's a house, we don't know if it's a farm, crazy land, whatever it is, just, they sell a piece of property. And he sells it with his wife's knowledge. So, very good married couple, right there, they talked about it beforehand, he just didn't spring it on her, right? They sell it together. So, everything is going well so far in this story. Um, and with his wife's knowledge, they keep back for, it says himself, but the implication there's both of them, some of the proceeds. Is that okay?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely, totally okay, right? They haven't done anything wrong. Um, and they bring only a part of it, and they laid it at the apostles' feet. Now, we wanna understand here what's, what's going on and what's implied. What's implied here is that when they laid out the apostles' feet, they're saying, right? Let's say, just easy math, they sold it for a hundred bucks, all right? And he pockets a twenty-dollar bill, and he's bringing the other eighty, and he puts it in front of the apostles' feet and said, we sold this for eighty bucks. Here's all the proceeds. That's what's going on. Not that, so he's not being punished for keeping anything back, and we're gonna see this when, uh, here in, in the reply here.
Well, he may not have even said, I only sold it for eighty dollars. He gave them two of them, though, and it was implied that he, that that was everything that he bought.
Well, we're going.
Is that true?
No, it's, it's, basically, it's, you know, they were, they were selling their stuff, laying it at the apostles' feet, right? Uh, and, by the way, we're gonna see the same language with the Stonian of Stephen. They laid their cloaks at Saul's feet, or at his feet. Um, and I haven't kind of puzzled through that yet, um, because we haven't gotten to that yet. But, um, no, it's implied that I sold it.
And someone came and told them, look, the men whom you put in prison are standing in the temple and teaching the people. Then the captain with the officers went and brought them, but not by force, for they were afraid of being stoned by the people.
And when they had brought them, they stepped before the council, and the high priest questioned them, saying, be strictly charged you not to teach in his name, yet, here you have filled Jerusalem with your preaching, and you intend to bring this man's blood upon us. Peter and apostles answered, we must have made God rather than men. God of our fathers raised Jesus, whom you killed by hanging him on a tree. God exalted him at his right hand as leader and Savior, to give repentance to Israel and forgiveness of sins. And we are witnesses to these signs, and so is the Holy Spirit, and God has given to those who beg.
When they heard this, they were furious and wanted to put him to death, but the Pharisees, the Pharisee made, a reliable, a teacher of the law, who had honored, who was honored by all the people, stood up in the seminoide and ordered the man be put outside for a while. And then he addressed the seminoide, made a venture, and considered carefully what he intended to do to Jesus. Some time ago, Judas appeared, claiming to be somebody, and about four hundred men rallied to him. He was killed, all his followers were dispersed, and he did nothing. After him, Judas, who had got a man, appeared, and raised him with the senses, and led a band of people who were old. Each of them was killed, and all his followers were scattered. Therefore, in the present case, I advise you, let them go alone. Let them go, for if their purpose or activity is of human origin, they will fail. But if it is from God, you will not be able to stop these men. You will only find yourselves fighting against God. His speech persuaded them, and called the apostles in, and then flogged. Then they ordered them not to speak in the name of Jesus and let them go. The apostles left the seminoide rejoicing, as they had been kind of worthy of suffering this grace from them. Day after day, in the temple course, from house to house, they never stopped teaching and proclaiming the good news that Jesus is the Messiah.
Alright. So, there's a lot going on in this chapter. So, there's, there's a guy, uh, Ananias, or excuse me, Ananias and Sephira. And, I, I wanna... Well, I'll get to that in just a second. They sell a piece of property. We don't know what property they sold, we don't know how big, small, we don't know if it's a house, we don't know if it's a farm, grazing land, whatever it is, just, they, they sell a piece of property. And he sells it with his wife's knowledge. So, very good married couple, right there, they talked about it beforehand, he just didn't spring it on her, right? They, they sell it together. So, everything is going well so far in this story. Um, and, and with his wife's knowledge, they keep back for, it says himself, but the implication there's both of them, some of the proceeds. Is that okay?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely, totally okay, right? They're, they haven't done anything wrong. Um, and they bring only a part of it, and they laid it at the apostles' feet. Now, we want to understand here what's, what's going on and what's implied. What's implied here is that when they laid out the apostles' feet, they're saying, right? Let's say, just easy math, they sold it for a hundred bucks, alright? And he pockets a twenty dollar bill. And he's bringing the other eighty, and he puts it in front of the apostles' feet and said, we sold this for eighty bucks. Here's all the proceeds. That's what's going on. Not that, so he's not being punished for keeping anything back, and we're gonna see this when, uh, here in, in, in the, uh, reply here.
Well, he may not have even said, I only sold it for eighty dollars. He gave them two of them though, and it was implied that he, that that was everything that he bought.
Well, we're, we're going...
Is that true?
No, it, it's, basically, it's, you know, they were, they were selling their stuff, laying it at the apostles' feet, right? Uh, and, by the way, we're gonna see the same language with the stonied of Stephen. They laid their cloaks at Saul's feet, or at, at his feet. Um, and I, and I haven't kind of puzzled through that yet, um, because we haven't gotten to that yet. But, um, no, it's, it's implied that I sold it for the amount that I am laying before you, right?
It could also be, we sold the property and here's all the proceeds. Without specifying an amount, just said, we sold it and I'm giving everything, we sold it for the church.
Pretty much that.
Isn't it some of this ego? Hold on, isn't it?
Well, we'll get there, yeah.
Isn't this like ego? Okay, somebody else did a good deed, everybody's like, oh, they did a good deed. No, I'm gonna go do a good deed, but it's not really what they did, because I want that kind of attention for the sake.
Yes, right? And so, it really kind of falls under simony, or simony, however you want to pronounce that word, heard of both ways. Um, which we'll get to Simon here later on in Acts. But, uh, Simon saw Peter, I think it was Peter, um, doing stuff. Simon was a sorcerer, Simon had converted at some point. And he goes, hey, um, I'll give you money, and you give me the power to do that. And he gets, he gets heavily reviewed, right? And that's where we get that term, uh, simony, simony from, of trying to basically purchase grace. This is, this is basically what Luther calls indulgences, right? Uh, because, because it's that same thing, there's this idea that you can purchase the power, purchase the forgiveness of God. And so, they've laid this at, he, he lays it at the apostles' feet, like, here's all the proceeds, look how much I'm helping the church, right? But it's not all the proceeds. And so, Peter, and this, this falls under the miracles, right? What's the point of the miracles? To verify the message of Christ crucified and resurrected. So, um, they, they've laid it before the feet of the church, uh, of the apostles, actually, the apostles. Um, and Peter's not gonna know this of himself, right? But we get to verse three, but Peter said, Ananias, why has Satan filled your heart to lie to the Holy Spirit and keep back for yourself a part of the proceeds of the land? You're not lying to us, you're lying to the Holy Spirit. That's, that's the sin here. And it's gonna have immediate grave consequences for this man, and potentially his wife as well. Um, right? And notice this, right? So again, if you just stop there, you're like, oh, they should have given it all to the church. But we have to, you know, scripture interprets scripture. So, verse four, while it remained unsold, did it not remain your own? So first of all, can you own property? Yes, we just have that verified by the Holy Spirit, okay? And after it's sold, was it not at your disposal?
Yes.
Again, yes. Why is it that you have contrived, uh, contrived this deed in your heart? You have not lied to men, but to God. And so, the sin is putting forward as everything, the proceeds, when he's keeping money back secretly. He wants his cake and to eat it too, and who's he lying to?
God.
God. It's like, when you give your heart to Christ but keep part of it back, it's a, it's a false deal, kind of, right?
Like, like, yeah, you can't, your, your life is either holy and slave to Christ or holy and slave to sin.
Well, that's why I was gonna point out that, I mean, if he, they basically, both he and his wife, tried to deceive the Holy Spirit by saying, yeah, like, this is all we got, when that wasn't the truth.
Yeah.
You basically lied to God, I mean, that's...
Yes. Yeah, and that, that, and that's the important thing here, right? Um, the, the, there's a lot that just kind of drops in here, okay? Um, why has Satan filled your heart to lie to the Holy Spirit? Now, first of all, um, not first of all, I, I wanna pause there for just a second, okay? When we talk about God, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, the Trinity, right? Now, there are, um, strains of Christian adjacent religions, so not Christianity. Now, we'll say that the Holy Spirit is the will of God, or the spirit of God, or the force of God, but is not God, is not a being, a separate person, right? Uh, not that we worship three beings, but one being, sorry, Athanasian creed. Um, but, but, uh, it's basically, um, it's, it's kind of like, the Holy Spirit is how God accomplishes things, um, through humanity, but is not part of the Trinity, right? The Trinity doesn't exist. Well, then why would it be a sin to, to sin against the Holy Spirit? It wouldn't be, right? Against you and you only have I sinned. Did David sin against Uriah? Yes. Did David sin against Bathsheba? Yes. What's the Psalm say? Against you and you only I have sinned, because ultimately, who did he sin against? God, right? And so, this is one of those verses that we go to and sit there and say, no, the Holy Spirit is a person, part of the Trinity, um, of, of the Trinity, part of the Trinity, of the Trinity, yeah. Uh, part, part of the Godhead, right? Um, and, and this is, this is, again, one of those proof texts for that. Um, and then, because, because notice this, you have not lied to men, but to God. So you don't go from, oh, the force of God, or the will of God, to directly to God. They're, they're the same thing, right? You've lied to God, yeah?
Well, I think we're missing something in there that talks about the heart. How Satan basically tempted your heart to do what was wrong. And that's, that's where we do, we see our faith. I mean, it was, it was mentioned earlier, you know, we need to be fully, fully committed to God. Well, how many here in this room are fully committed to God? Raise your hand.
Yeah.
Okay. We, we all, we all, we all struck for sin, the, the condition of the heart is, is one of those main things we need to, we need to look at.
And this, this language here, by the way, of, um, verse three, Ananias, why has Satan filled your heart to lie? Is reflective of Luke, chapter twenty-two, verse three. Then Satan entered into Judas, called Ascharyat, who was, uh, one of the number of the twelve. He went away and converted with the chief priests, right? And so, what is the cause of, or one of the causes of sin, is this temptation, Satan's temptation? Can people fall away? Yeah, I mean, Judas was one of the guys who went out and cast out demons and healed in Jesus' name. He was one of the guys that was baptizing people, right? He was one of the guys that said, hey, keep the little children away from Jesus, right? He was one of the guys that heard Thomas's words, said Thomas, when, when Thomas said, let us go that we may die with him. And Judas had his time to leave, right then and there. Judas was there at the feet of the five thousand, he was there when, um, Jesus told the crowd that, unless you eat my body and drink my blood, you have no part of me. Or eat my flesh, drink my blood, you have no part of me. And the crowd said, this is too hard a saying, and everybody leaves, and Je- Jesus turns around, and he sees the twelve, and he said, you guys, you guys, you know, gonna go too? And he hears Peter say, Lord, to whom shall we go? You have the words of eternal life, right? And Judas falls away.
But, but Peter did the same thing, three times.
Right?
He fell away three times.
Yeah, and, and now, uh, yes. I, but I'm just, I'm just saying, right? Like, um, so, we, because the question would be, or one of the questions would be, in, in, or should be, is like, oh wow, all these people are believing, why isn't everybody a Christian now? Well, it's because even believers can fall away. Even believers can commit heinous sins. Now, it's very important to, to sit there and say, okay, we can't necessarily sit there and say that, um, Ananias and Sephira aren't in heaven. We, we don't know, we're not the judges for that, the text doesn't say that, but they do face an immediate temporal consequence to their sin. Um, and that is this, when Ananias heard these words, he fell down and breathed his last.
Something comes to mind here too, though, in, in that, and I don't know whether Ananias and his wife were in this position or not, but maybe it's a possibility, but something does come to mind where we're told in scripture that no one should think of themselves more highly than they ought to.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's...
It, it just comes right to mind, yeah.
So, they were, they were wanting honor and glory, right? Um, that's why I said, they wanted their cake and to eat it too. Or, yeah, they wanted to have their cake and eat it too by sitting there saying, hey, look, we gave all the proceeds to the church.
And wanted the praise for everybody else around them.
But we're gonna keep back, you know, money for ourselves.
I'm, I'm gonna go back to what Pastor Davis is saying. Um, yeah, Peter did that. And, but these guys, it's a knowledgeable timeframe decision. It wasn't something that just immediately happened in fear, or something else took over, and, you know, they was, like, after they did it, they go, whoa, you know, I messed up.
Yep.
It wasn't a decision that was made that I'm going to mess up.
Correct.
To keep it.
Correct. So, this is one of the reasons why, like, we talk about the visible and invisible church. So, the one true church is the invisible church, which is all believers, right? What's the visible church? The visible church are those who identify as Christians who go to church. But in the visible church, are there unbelievers? And I'm not, I'm not, I, I don't want you to sit there and sit there and say, oh, do I, do I not really believe hard enough or anything else like that? It's like, no, it's, it's, there's people that, they, they go to church because it's good for, uh, political connections, or, or to make money, or, or whatever reason.
Voluntary motives.
Right, for, yeah, basically for our, uh, ulterior motives. And this has been true since, pretty much, yeah.
Going back to why they killed them, because you look at all the times people sin against Christ, and what did he do? He forgave them. Didn't kill them.
So, so Peter does not kill them, the Holy Spirit does. So...
Well, killing, somebody dying doesn't mean what, doesn't mean if they're forgiven or not, right?
Correct.
You could just die.
Correct. So, the Spirit has come upon them in power several times to verify their message, right? The unforgivable, unforgivable sin is to blaspheme against the Holy Spirit, right? In other words, to, to, uh, not believe what the Holy Spirit says, okay? So, notice that Peter says to lie to the Holy Spirit, right? Um, and so, this, uh, event is to confirm the message that the apostle, that the apostles are preaching. And to go against it, even for your own gain, to, basically to try to use it for your own gain, instead of bringing glory to God, is dangerous for you. So again, we can go up to heaven and Ananias and Sephira might be up there. We don't know that. We just know that there was an immediate temporal consequence to the sin. And these, this is one of the few people that that happens to, right? That doesn't always happen throughout scripture, but it does happen some places in scripture. Um, there are the, the, uh, young army lads who make fun of, uh, Elijah for being bald, right? I know our Bible is usually translated, young men or young boys, or something like that, but the Hebrew there, um, is actually, uh, basically people who are, uh, young army age, right? And they're, they're making fun of the prophet for being bald. And, uh, you know, Elijah prays out, and what happens? A couple of shebeers come out and kill them all, like forty, some odd...
Forty-two.
Yeah, four, forty-two people, right? What?
I'll teach them.
Which is, so, so, the, the point is, the point is, the, the point of that story, the point of this story, the, the point of that event, the point of this event, is that it is very, very, very dangerous to sin against the church, because you're sinning against the Holy Spirit. And, you know, um, temporal death might be the least of your concerns in doing that. And it's, it's a warning, because, so, Ananias and Sephira didn't keep the first commandment the first commandment. The, the forty-two army lads did not keep the first commandment the first commandment, right? Adam and Eve didn't keep the first commandment the first commandment. Did they die because they didn't do it? Yes, did they die right in the moment that they ate of the fruit? No, but death still pained to them. So, it's not so much, I, I have three hands that I have to come back to, so just a second. So it's, so, I underst- Everybody who sins dies, right? It might be immediately. It might be fifty years down the road. It might be a hundred and seventy years down the road. But everybody who sins dies. Okay, your hand has been up for a bit, yeah?
We were talking about Ananias and Sephira, whether they went to heaven or not. If they died and went to heaven, isn't that a reward? That would not have punishment.
Well, here's, here's the thing, so, we don't judge, right? That, that, that's God's job. So, so, some people we can speculate, we can sit there and say, yeah, that, right? And there's, there's like a few people that we absolutely know, like the rich man that was, uh, kept Lazarus begging outside his house. We know where he wound up, we don't know his name, but we know exactly where he wound up, because, you know, Jesus tells us. Um, but God, God is the ultimate judge, right? And, um, Christ died for everybody who's a sinner. Christ died for Ananias and Sephira. Uh, so, scripture doesn't say where they wound up, so we're not gonna say where they wound up, because that's not our place to, to say that, basically. So, it's not so much, I mean, the warning is there for us, right? Um, sinning against the church, sinning against the message of the church, um, sinning against the Holy Spirit, there can be immediate harsh temporal consequences. Um, our sins are forgiven in Christ, that doesn't mean that we're therefore sinless, right? You could take communion and die thirty seconds later and have sinned between the time you took communion and died. Does that mean that since you sinned, you're going to hell? No, right? Because, because your sin has been atoned for, has been paid for. That's the gospel, not that you are sinless. And there's a lot of Christians, even a whole traditions of Christianity, that confuse that and say, well, since Christ has paid for my sins, I must therefore be sinless. The holiness movement, Methodism, Wesleyanism, is based off of that concept, right? A large part of the works righteousness behind Catholicism is based off of that concept. But the gospel is that our sin has been paid for, right? So, does that mean, and this is, this is the one thing, I think it's Corinthians, right? That they get absolutely right, but then take it in the wrong place, right? Does that mean that we should sin all the more that grace may abound? By no means, right? They understood, oh, I'm receiving more grace the more I sin, because that sin is being covered. And Paul's like, yes, but that doesn't mean you run out and purposely commit sin, right? That's the wrong conclusion from that. So they had a right understanding, the wrong conclusion. So, with this, again, um, we can't speculate necessarily, uh, where they wound up. We just know that they suffered an immediate temporal consequence, um, by, uh, trying to co-opt the message of the church, co-opt the glory of God to themselves. I had more hands. Robert, your hand was up earlier, and Doug, your hand was up earlier.
I have to wonder. I have to wonder, though, that like, in instances, uh, in the Bible, like, in case of Ananias and Sephira, that the same thing was... Anyhow, I have to wonder, though, like, it, it seems like that was one of those kind of things where God had this sincere clear message to everyone in the church at that time, that, look, this will not be tolerated at all.
Yeah.
You know?
Right, because what's the second half of verse five? And great fear came upon all who heard of it, right?
It's almost like you better check your motivation.
It's almost like you better check your motivation.
Yeah. What's, what's the first commandment? What does this mean? What's that, what's that first action verb there? You should. Fear, why? Because God is a holy God who created existence, and God is a holy God who punishes sin, and you are a sinner.
A God of love and judgment.
Right? What's the beginning of all wisdom? What?
Fear of the Lord.
Fear of the Lord, right? Fear of the Lord. Fear of the Lord doesn't mean, ah, God is so great and big. Fear of the Lord is, holy God, unrighteous person, right? Sinful man, right? Yeah, he could smite us at any moment he wants to, that is absolutely his right. But, right? What's the glory of God? That he deals with us in his mercy. And that's what makes God a glorious God. And different from all the other gods out there. The Greek gods smited people, Vishnu smites people.
If it wasn't mercy, we could pretty much all be dead.
Right? Um, Allah smites people. Now, God does smite people, but how does God want to deal with people? Through his mercy. And it's only after they keep on tripping up after themselves where he says, if you want to be such a great sinner, I will hand you over to your sin and you can suffer the consequences.
That, that's what the footnote says, grievous sin threatens to extinguish spiritual life. So, this, this must have been a gr- a grievous sin that uh, uh, Ananias and Sapphira.
Well, yeah.
I mean, I, I, I'm in trouble distinguishing between bad sins and good sins, any sin, there ought to be sin and sin. But this was a grievous sin, because they're lying to the Holy Spirit.
Yeah.
And if they had gotten away with this, then other people would have stepped forward and it would have been, it's almost like politics, I don't know how to put it.
I think one of the, one of the things we need to look at is all of this is part of God's plan.
Yes.
We don't understand why, we don't understand how, we don't understand period.
Correct.
You know, and, and we can, we can spend a year looking at Ananias and Sapphira and still not know what God's plan was for it. And I think that, that when you mention fear, that's what it was. There were people, not just Ananias and Sapphira, but there were other people that were amongst those in the church at that time that maybe were there for other reasons. And maybe this was, and I'm just saying, maybe this was a reason that God did it. We don't know.
Yeah. And, just a second, I got one, or one and then two. I, I wanna give some more context here too, because Luke isn't just writing to the people, he isn't just writing to guy who loves God, Theophilus, right? And he isn't just writing to us now. But this is God's word, this is for all people, for all time. Shortly after this book is written. Cause I think John's Gospel comes last, yeah. There is a false religion known as Gnosticism, which is, um, there, there's, there's not just one set belief in Gnosticism, but there's a lot. And primarily, the big thing with Gnosticism is a rejection of the physical world, um, and an elevation of the spiritual world. And Gnosticism, very, very early on, tries to co-opt Christianity. This is a warning, not just against individuals, but against other religions, false religions, that would try to co-opt the message of the one true God. And saying, this is where it leads to. You're saying, you're doing this for the good of people. But, you're sinning against God. And that leads to spiritual down, at least physical down, right? And so, there is, um, there's several layers of warning that are going on here. It's not just for the individuals, but for what would be happening within a few decades of this book being written. What would be happening to the church and what would come into the church? Go forward a few hundred more years, and you have the Arian heresy, which says that Jesus isn't God, but the greatest of creation and first created. And only fully man, but not fully God, right? Go a few forward, a little bit later than that, you have Pelagianism, Plagius, where um you can be sinless. And so, you take that to the actual conclusion, well, if you can be sinless, then why did Christ have to die for humanity? That's just, right? You should be able to earn your salvation. And so, kinda, it's a warning for every heresy that would come along. This is where heresy leads. You think, you might even think you're doing good. I have no doubt that Arius thought that he was defending God. He was wrong, he's a heretic. But he was scandalized by the thought of God dying. I have no doubt that Plagius thought that he was doing what was right, but it was heresy and it was wrong. You can do the wrong thing for the right reasons. And you can do the wrong thing for the wrong reasons. And they both lead to the same place. Adam and then Doug. One, one, one more thing I learned to unpack with this, the opening of chapter five, is that we all admit that one more day is a gift. We're, we're not guaranteed tomorrow, and in the same way that we're not guaranteed grace, we're not entitled to it. And so, whenever I look at passages like this, I think, this is unfair. Well, it's something that God obviously did, because the last thing that this man heard was, you lied to God. And then he was instantaneously in God's presence. That's gotta be a little awkward for him. So, whenever I, I look at this, I say. I, I say, I feel like this is unfair to Ananias, maybe what, well, either God's right or I'm right. So, there's a pretty good chance that my opinion on this, in it being unfair is somehow wrong. If the way to the sin are death, well, his, his kingdom will earn it as expected like it does for most of us. Yes. Very true.
Would First Corinthians eleven, twenty-seven through thirty-two regarding the Lord's Supper be applicable? Or be instructive regarding the sin?
I think so, this is why uh he, uh, Paul writes, this is why some of you have fallen ill, right? And, and died, right? Because um they're taking the Lord's Supper in a wrong manner. Which is why, for us, like Lutheran Church Missouri sinned people, why we take those prohibitions and commandments when it comes to the Lord's Supper so seriously. Um, and I realize that we get people mad at us all the time for that, and say, well, why can't we just have open communion? Listen, they were doing it wrong in First Corinthians, people were falling sick and dying, okay? We wanna make sure, like, it's, 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 it is a gift from God, but, you know, we're supposed to believe the same thing. We're supposed to examine ourselves, right? Um, we're supposed to, you know, hold, hold these certain truths when it comes to this gift, because um, there is a warning of judgment when you take it wrongly. So, yeah, so it's very much that, that kinda same thing.
Yeah, and I think toward the end, as, as he finishes, he said, but if we judged ourselves truly, we would not be judged. But when we are judged by the Lord, we are disciplined. What's the point of discipline? Bringing you about. And he says, so that we may not be condemned along with the world. So, does it say, like, in their case, you know, we don't know if Ananias and Sapphira are in heaven? And these people here, we can't say, well, they were condemned and judged to hell, no, we can't say that, can we?
No, because here's the thing, if you have to be a perfect Christian to get to heaven. We're not gonna make it. We're not gonna make it, right? No, we rely on the forgiveness of God, right?
I thought something we didn't bring up was with the wife's full knowledge, and I think it.
We're gonna get to her in just a second, but yeah.
When we go along, and even like when the church goes along with the church that doesn't believe the way we do, that's, that's just as, you're just as complicit in it. And that's, I mean, she was brought dead, so, you know, obviously just as complicit. But I always told my kids when they were kids, I was like, careful who's in your car, because you're the one who's gonna get pulled over, and you're gonna, you know. You, you become complicit with it your way.
What, what should Sapphira had actually done? She should have warned her husband not to do this.
She should have admitted it to the process.
Yeah, she should have admitted it as well.
She was part of the plan.
She was part of the plan, yeah, I, I'm just, I'm just saying, like, right? There, there's a lot of things wrong with this, okay? Deb.
Pastor, since we talked about communion.
Yep.
If you have someone that was raised knowingly that the sacrament of communion is uh Christ's blood and body. And then they grow up and they change uh their faith to another religion, and that religion doesn't believe that, they just believe that it's a remembrance. Is that person, is that person gonna be, they, they healed or not?
No, no, because actually what our official stance is, is that they don't truly have the sacrament. So, um, our Baptists, our Methodists, our um, a lot of Anglicans, you know, uh, non, non-national Pentecostal brethren in Christ. We, our official stance is, is um, because they don't recognize the true body and blood of Christ. Um, and not to be a receptionist on this, but just condensing the teaching, we hold that they do not truly have the sacrament.
So, if that person is taking communion like that, but in their heart, they know maybe.
That, that's, or that's a receptionist belief? See, the, the issue with receptionist belief says, well, it's only dependent upon what that person believes, which is uh basically behind open communion, what we would call open communion. This is when Christians come in to us and say, well, I know I'm a Christian, so why can't I have the Lord's Supper? And it's like, it doesn't matter what you believe, just individually, or should, should say, the only thing that, it isn't only what you believe that matters. But it's taking it in the same common confession of this altar as well, right? Um, so, we believe that, we, we would deny receptionism for the very fact, because if somebody here, since we have all confessed the same thing, takes it but doesn't confess what we confess, um, or doesn't believe it's truly body, uh, Christ's body and blood, they take it in judgment, right? So, where Christ is truly present, which we would maintain is basically three branches of Christianity. You wanna get, hack some people off, okay? We are Missouri sinned Lutherans, we don't play well with others. Lutherans, Catholics, Eastern Orthodox. Cause we hold that Christ is more than just spiritually present, yep?
I'm sorry, but uh, my understanding is that Anglicans do believe.
Some do, some don't. And that's the thing, that's, that's why we wanna say as a whole, as a whole body.
The Episcopalian maybe, but.
Like, like the Anglo-Catholic would, right? The, the Anglo, the Anglo-Catholic would, but not all of them, they have a range, they go from full symbolism to uh basically Catholic transams, transubstantiation within their communion. Within their church body, that's, that's why I'm saying, like, just in general off of, off of labels, right? So, so some Anglicans, Lutherans, Roman Catholics, and uh Eastern Orthodox, and that's because we hold that Christ is more than just spiritually present in community. Which is why Luther says, better to drink wine with the Pope, or, or blood with the Pope than mere, eat mere bread with um, I forget.
Yeah, he gets, he gets real mad at
Yes.
Other Protestants that follow him, like, real, real.
Yes, yes, he does, yes, he does, yeah, yeah. He does, yeah, he is not a fan of Zingland, at all. Um, so, so we would hold that it's not just receptionism, it's not just based on the individual. Because i- if you break it down to that, then you should be giving communion to everybody. But communion, and by calling it holy communion, right? We, uh, it's that same root for community that we are recognizing as well. So, I got Robert and then Doug.
On Debbie's question, if they are taking it, you say it's, they're not really taking communion, because they don't believe in the body and blood. What happens to that person that's not taking communion? I mean, is that not a big problem?
You mean not taking communion here, or?
Yeah, they take communion like the Methodist, let's say, and it's not real. Does that harm them in any way? Does it keep them from going to heaven?
No, no, there are Methodists in heaven. I, I firmly believe, I'm not God, so, you know, he's the final authority, but I firmly believe that both Wesley brothers are in heaven, right? Um, I have disagreements with their doctrines that they taught, all right? Um, but what saves? Faith saves. Now, we've been given the sacraments for um, which is part of the preaching of the Word, for the, for the Christian. So, baptism is the sacrament that brings somebody into the church. Communion gives the forgiveness of sins, reminds people of the death and resurrection of Jesus Christ, do this in remembrance of me. God comes down to us, we are in his presence. It strengthens faith. Um, it strengthens the community, there, there's, there's many, many aspects of it, right? But um. Merely drinking wine or grape juice and eating just plain bread isn't spiritually harmful. Basically, what we're, there's, well, what, to put it in layman's terms or, or parlayance, um, they have Christianity light, all right? They have Coors Light, and we got full-on Coors champagne abuse. All right, that's kinda the, the difference there, all right? Doug?
I, I think they tried to apply too much reason or what's reasonable.
Yes.
And with God, I mean, uh, we believe that in six days he created the, the universe. We believe that Jonah was in the whale for three days, we believe that, God tells that in the Word. It's reasonable to believe what God says to be true. If he says, this is my body and my blood, that's what he's saying.
Yep. Now, uh, just real quick, because we are at the time, uh, just the verse six, the young men rose and wrapped him up and carried him out and buried him, all right? Um, and then after an interval, about three hours, his wife came. So, this guy has a full funeral, prepare for burial, full funeral in under three hours, and nobody goes and tells his wife. Just FYI.
By the way.
So, uh, but that's where we'll end, we'll pick up uh verse seven next week.